Call the June 12, 2023 meeting of the Leddington City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Trazano?
Present.
Counselor May?
Here.
Counselor Wenceski?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Stibbets?
Here.
Counselor Kane?
Present.
Counselor Balger?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. At this time, I'll welcome Dr. Craig Nelson, pastor of Path to Life Ministries, to come to the lectern and deliver the invocation.
Would you bow your head with me, please, as I lead us in prayer? Father, with gratitude, we have a council meeting like this that we can express personal opinion and have it count for our local government. We thank you, God, for this blessing. You have blessed this nation for so many years, God. But therefore, Lord, I do ask two simple requests. First, I pray wisdom for the council. I pray that you would guide them. So many times, Lord, I'm sure they're making decisions that they feel like they don't have all the information they would like, that they aren't sure what's going to happen if we implement or deny some motion. Lord, I pray therefore for wisdom for each council member here. And second, Lord, I ask for courage for each council member here, that they would make the right decision. Lord, you said in your word, "I, the Lord, declare what is right. I speak the truth." I pray, Lord, that you would give wisdom, even if it is politically unpopular, but they would make the wise decision. I pray this always and only in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point in our agenda, we're going to open it to public comment. I would ask that anyone wishing to address the council to please step to the lectern, speak directly into the microphone, and state your name, street address or ward, city of residence, and organizational affiliation, if that's appropriate. Once you've done this, you'll be recognized for three minutes. Please address all comments to this chair. If the time limit expires during any comment, I'd ask that you finish your sentence and yield the floor. If you wish to present materials directly to the council, there is a shelf below the microphone that asks you to place those materials there. And then, of course, there'll be another public comment meeting later on the agenda. I'll open it this time for public comment.
My name is Carmen Chapman. We have property at 801 West Loomis Street. I do reside in PM Township. It came to my attention this weekend in the Leddington Daily News that there was going to be a small cell site wireless permit for discussion on Friday, this coming Friday. And then I reached out to Sean Reed, and he said, "No, the meeting was tonight." So he gave me a copy of the agreement that you have before you that you're, I guess, going to be looking at to approve. I do have a few concerns. My background is I've been in the telecom industry since 1989, in the operations and network capacity. My concerns are the following. Well, prior to saying what my concerns are, my question to Sean was, is this a 4G or 5G small cell site that's being proposed in the three locations? I drove all three sites. I have great coverage. I have three out of four bars. Sean was not able to advise whether the purpose was for coverage or if it was capacity. You're all aware of the three locations. I would say one of the three, the one at the end of Leddington Avenue, might have some capacity issue if you're talking about Gus Macker and other type of activities that we have down in the area. So one of my main concern is the EMF. Has the board or have you received any EMF reports as to what these small cell sites will provide or will emit, not only its cell site itself, but in cumulative to other radio, other things that are being transmitted in the area, in the air? Now, I understand that you're probably not going to respond to any of my questions, but that is a question. Have you received any EMF? There are lots of reports, both nationally and internationally, that state that there are some cancer concerns, especially if it's a 5G tower. It came to my attention last year when I spoke with Sean that the state, unfortunately, in my view, has given a carte blanche, a carte blanche, that all the carriers can pretty much locate a tower wherever they want with little to no objection from municipalities or even state level, which is, I think, unfortunate for every municipality in this country. So some of the things that I have that I've seen, and I just quickly looked at the contract or the agreement that you have late this afternoon, it didn't specify it was 4G or 5G. There's no, I don't even know if you're aware if it's a capacity or if it's a coverage. For me, coverage, it doesn't seem like it is an issue, because like I said, do I have one minute left, or I'm done?
Just if you could finish your sentence, that'd be great.
So my last sentence is EMF exposure and the proliferation of the small cell sites, as it indicates in the agreement, that the next permit that comes through by any carrier, and I believe there are three carriers in this area, that they can submit 30 sites with one permit application. That's a huge concern for proliferation, but more importantly, the EMF. And I hope you do consider the EMF exposure that we, whether you live in the area or whether you're driving by or walking by in the popular areas, what kind of exposure you're going to have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Lewanzman. I live at 502 North Roberts Street, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the Leddington Petunia Parade Board. On May 13th and 15th, we had two meetings here at City Hall. Thank you, Jackie, for setting that up for us. That was a really nice evening, about 40-plus people came and enjoyed that. Then on Saturday, May 20th, we had 32,000 petunias delivered to Rotary Park. With the help of volunteer block captains in the community, the flowers were planted in 43 blocks throughout the town on a cool, misty morning. DPW and the local law enforcements did an excellent job making it a safe day for us to plant. I'm going to pause, because fast forward, the word drought entered our vocabulary. The board worked hard to figure that challenge out. I'd never seen it before, and since 1988, I think it was one of the first times we had to reface that. We reached out to social media. The Daily News added stories addressing the drought and doubling up on our daily watering with our truck. This morning on MOM, in the interview with our mayor and city manager, the petunias came up again. Yes, we have lost a lot of petunias, but together we are moving forward. The level of problem solving, and I address this to all of you and all of us here as well, the level of problem solving in Leddington has been amazing. The boulevard looks great. We are working closely with the Marina and recently with the purchase of 40, excuse me, 60,000, sorry, and recently with the purchase of 60 flats from Gustafson's Greenhouse, we will replace 4,000 petunias in the next couple of days in blocks most impacted by the drought. We're also storing those at the fairground. We've worked closely with them, problem solving, problem solving, problem solving, trying to figure it out. I like to think back, two years ago, my husband and I were out by the hospital. A gentleman across Highway 10 said, "The petunias look great." And I said, "Thanks." And he said, "How wonderful that the city does this." He was so surprised, he safely came across the highway. We talked. He was so surprised. When I explained, "We're a nonprofit organization with 43 blocks, over 30,000 petunias, and many, many volunteers." In closing, we, the board, want to thank you all for your part in beautifying the streets of Leddington, you, the community here, and the larger Mason County Plus. We are full of leaders who are problem solvers. On behalf of the Petunia Parade, we say thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Tom Sanders, 927 Maple Street, Leddington. So everybody wants a piece of the Oprah pie. Didn't the developers in the corner of James and Filer get Oprah designation? The plan presented was to build townhouses on that corner. Now it's for sale. $450,000 was the designation rescinded. The next owner will want an Oprah designation as well. Foster School property has been given Oprah designation. Not one shovel full of dirt has been turned. It's been broke into and vandalized twice, requiring city law enforcement involvement. I don't know the taxable value of it, but as it stands right now, we all know it's worth more than $20,000. The corner of Washington and Second Street was given Oprah status some years ago. It has since changed hands and status given again. By changing hands, does the 12-years start over due to it being a new owner? Well, one can understand giving a developer a break. The break should be to the property, not the owners. Each time ownership changes, the 12-year frame gets extended? And what about the rent and lease fees? Over 12 years, the timeframe, well, it'll be a cap on how much they can go up. The owners are already getting a break on the taxes, being frozen for 12 years. Oprah should be a one-and-done. Some projects, the Second Street building, the James Street corner, move at a snail's pace or get scrapped altogether for resale and profit. Maybe the Oprah shouldn't kick in until the project begins in earnest, off the drawing board and to the site. Leddington has a maintenance money problem, and by freezing taxes at today's rates will not help the problem. City taxpayers deserve better.
Thank you.
Hi. Jeff Bielfus, 626 North Lakeshore Drive. On your agenda this evening, you're going to be discussing parking fees at Sterns Beach. And as all of you know, I'm in favor of this. I truly believe it's wise for council to consider implementing a parking fee at Sterns Beach. And as all of you know, the city of Leddington, there's not a lot of opportunities to raise revenues, other than raising property taxes. And to have the opportunity at Sterns, I think it should really be looked at. If you just consider the example of West Shore Community College, you have an institution that their revenues consist of tuition and some tax dollars, but they have a beautiful rec center. That rec center is a wonderful asset, but it costs a tremendous amount of money for them to maintain it. And in order to maintain it, they charge those who use it. Students, they get it for free, or it's in their tuition. And so it's not novel to charge users. It's the norm. If you look at Leddington, we too have a wonderful asset. It's called Sterns Park or Sterns Beach, and it too costs a tremendous amount of money to maintain. And currently, the residents are the ones that pay the whole bill, and I would suggest that you do institute a parking fee, but that residents would somehow have free passes because they're already paying with their tax dollars. But that those who use it, other than residents, should help pay the cost for the maintenance of this wonderful asset. It's not a novel idea. It's the norm. If you go around the country, it is the norm. And so I would just encourage you to truly consider this and that it's a math question. And the math says, we really should, we really should use this resource to raise revenue to help support itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the meeting to public comment, and knowing that we'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And we'll move on to item number five, which is the approval of the consent agenda. The items to be considered are the approval of the May 22, 2023 regular meeting, approval of the May 31, 2023 Committee of the Whole Minutes, payment of bills, and adopting this agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carried. Thank you. At this point, item number six, public hearing, Oprah District for 215 South James. And we'll open the public comment for, or the public hearing, I should say, for 215 South James, the Oprah District. Does anyone have any public comments?
Can we speak on this, Your Honor?
That's a good question. I assume, didn't Mitch counsel speak?
I would wait until, I would wait until the action itself.
Okay. Yep. Any other public comment? If not, we'll close the public hearing and move to item B under item number six for adoption of the resolution for establishment of an Oprah district for 215 South James. And we'll need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Trazano, second by Counselor May. Any questions or comments? If not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I thought I had made a note, and that's what I was looking for. I guess I had brought up the last time with Counselor Trazano about the parking issue. And I drove by there again today, and I read that he's hoping to have nine offices, maybe, in the bottom part, or I'm not sure where all they're going to be, but then three to four apartments upstairs. And I mean, I think it's great that we're bringing people downtown to live and to be a part of downtown, but I just, I don't know where the parking is going to come from. I know there's some, there were like six or seven parking spots back there. I don't know if there's something that we need to do as a city to help with this issue, but I just, I don't see how we can keep bringing things downtown like that and not do something about parking. I mean, you know, Your Honor, you've been here for years, and we've had parking problem issues for a long time. And this, I think, is going to make a huge impact on that down there, too.
Any other comments or concerns?
I look at parking a little bit differently, Counselor. First and foremost, we have 750 parking spaces downtown, and that's both in lots and on the street. We've had business owners, I remember a DDA meeting one time when a business owner who had apartments upstairs flat out commented that he wasn't concerned about where his tenants parked, he was concerned about where people to his business park. And, you know, I think we create more parking issues by mandating unreasonable parking requirements. You take a look at the Lofts on Row, because of the parking, mandatory parking requirement that we put on there, there's a big part of that property, which could have been used for apartments, has to be parking, and that lot isn't even full. You look at the apartments on Leddington Avenue, those lots aren't full. So he does have, he is planning, from what I've read, I haven't talked to the developer, he is planning on providing parking behind there. But again, my own personal view is, I don't see it as an issue.
Well, I guess I just, I want to say, you know, we've got businesses downtown, and they keep coming to us complaining that people park in front of their business for maybe all day sometimes. And, you know, I can see that that's going to be an issue down there, especially if the people that have offices there or live upstairs could be parked in front of some of those businesses all day. So I guess that's what I'm trying to, I guess, to figure out is, you know, when they come to us and say, "Hey, can you put up a 20-minute parking spot out in front of my business because people are coming there and parking all day?" You know, how are we going to, how are we going to take care of that?
Maybe this is early, but I'd ask Mr. Vischer to come and maybe just address the questions relative to parking.
Yeah. My name's Caleb Vischer. I'm doing the development there. So on the parking, we have 19 parking spaces behind the building because we actually own the whole back alley. So the whole, that whole back alley is actually all private. It's not a public alley, so that's our parking back there. So there's approximately, I think, 11 on the east side of the alley. And then we're also going to be demoing the two small buildings in the back. There's like an old cooler and an old kitchen. Those are getting ripped off with a deck going right there, and that will be parking underneath the deck as well. So, and we also own about half of the west side of the alley as well. So there's approximately 19 parking spots. We'll have enough for 10 to 11 people in the office at any given point. The only people that park on the road are clients that come in and park for short meetings. Other than that, all of our staff and all the rentals would have specific parking in the back, so it would be one spot per unit, and then all of our employees, and then we'd still have some extra parking back there.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor of adopting resolution for establishment of an Oprah district at 215 South James, to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to finance and committee staff reports, finance personnel. Counselor Johnson?
Okay. I have no report tonight, but I have a few action items. The first one, we had first reading at the last council meeting. We need to adopt ordinance number 509-23. It's a three-year agreement with CAR communication for the Leddington Municipal Marina. So I will make a motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'll support the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Johnson and seconded by Counselor Stibbets to adopt ordinance 509-23, which, as he's described, is a three-year agreement with CAR communication relative to television or TV and internet. Madam Clerk, this, I believe, is a roll call, so if you could call the roll.
Counselor Stibbets?
Yes.
Counselor Balger?
Yes.
Counselor May?
Yes.
Counselor Trazano?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Wenceski?
Yes.
Counselor Kane?
Aye.
All ayes?
Thank you. Motion carried.
The next item, I do have a question on this. If, because Ms. Chapman stepped up and spoke about this, if we wanted to ask her questions, could we do that? Or unless you can answer, Mitch, I, there's like the EMF?
There's, just to clarify, the statute, and Ross can also jump in here as well, the statute is very clear. There's a very specific list of items that the city has control or not control over, as well as what can go in the application. The application that we have or the permit that you saw, as well as the entire ordinance that was written, was developed by Protech, which was a consortium of local governments, attorneys, and wireless providers to come up with some sort of an example that could be used, that could fit within the matrix of the Metro Act and FCC rules, Federal Communications Commission. And so that is where our permit has come from. The reason for this permit to come back to council, because if you remember correctly, this has been approved before by you all, there was an issue because we actually requested something that was not standard of other utilities, which was a notification of properties within 300 feet of the location or co-location of a small cell wireless facility. They kicked back immediately with their attorney, acknowledging that they would likely win that fight if it went to that place. And so there are very, very few limitations or abilities, I should say, were limited in what we can push back on, even so much so that 300-foot notifications to property owners, we could not get away with.
Well, I thought that's what we had talked about, that we had no control over that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I will make a motion to approve the small cell wireless permit with Verizon Wireless.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Motion made by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Wenceski, to approve small cell wireless permit for Verizon Wireless. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
The next item is Consumers Energy Standard Lighting Contract. As part of the Leddington Area School District remodel project at the high school and middle school, the city had to request the removal of several lights and poles from Consumers. The city will initially be required to front the cost to remove them, but we will work to reach an understanding with the school or their contractor for reimbursement. The city has to move forward with this, as these are located by the entrances of the new parking lot off Anderson. So I make a motion to approve authorization for change in standard lighting contract with Consumers Energy.
And Counselor Johnson, could I ask you, and Mr. Hammersley, if I'm in here, let me know, but could you combine both of those, adopt the resolution, and then also authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign in the event that, can it all be one motion, I guess is what I'm asking?
Because there's a resolution involved, it's cleaner.
Very good. Thank you. Then motion by Counselor Johnson to adopt the resolution for changes to standard light contract. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a comment. I understand this whole process, but I am, I do have a reservation when we say that we will, we're going to front the cost and we'll work with the other party to recoup the cost. I would much rather say, we will upfront the cost and we have an agreement with the other party that we would recoup it, because if it doesn't work out, then we're footing the bill here. So I'm just commenting that, you know, I know you'll get it done.
This was, Superintendent Stickney brought this to me. It's our understanding, and we didn't know about this until just recently, that the school district had put in this request some time ago, or the contractor had, and Consumer's just been kind of sitting on it. But it needs to happen now, and so that's the issue with timing and getting it before you all, so that we can then put the wheels in motion. But you're absolutely right. This is, this is one that you would rather have, has been agreed upon, but will be agreed upon as the result.
Well, and Mitch, I had the question in the first place, why is the city responsible for that? Is it not on school property?
It is, it's one of our light poles. So the city has our contract for lighting and streetlights throughout the city of Leddington, and this is one of those poles that Consumers owns and manages. And so that's why we have the expense on this.
Have we already had conversations with the superintendent at the school?
I believe Superintendent Stickney has already spoken with Crispin Company about that reimbursement, because it was, it's part of their project.
It's part of their project.
Correct.
It's part of their project, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for the standard, changes to standard lighting contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried, thank you.
And the next item is, I make a motion to adopt the resolution for changes to standard lighting contract with Consumers.
Is that resolution to author, or is what you're asking, the motion is to authorize city manager and city clerk to sign that, also authorization?
No, I was going to do, adopt the resolution. We just.
We just, we took care of that, so we're on to the next one.
Okay, well, I thought we had to do that separately.
We, I, I wanted to roll, adopt the resolution and authorize the city manager together, and I was told that's not a good idea. So we're not doing that.
So I will make a motion to authorize city manager and city clerk to sign authorization for Consumers Energy to make changes to standard lighting contract.
Second. We have a motion by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Trizano. All those, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, the next item, Mitch, I think I'm going to turn this over.
Perfectly, okay. So as a part, as a part of the process for alley paving, or a request for alley paving, there are a number of steps that go into that. And the first thing is, we have a petition that is received, where it received more than 70% of those that live along or the linear footage of an alley. We have received that for this stretch of, of alley, and so as required under, under our ordinance, I must have statute there, there's a number of items that kind of come into play. The first one is approval of the manager's report and a tentative determination of necessity. These two things say that the manager has provided a document that state that the, the special assessment can occur, here's where it's at, and here's the rationale for it. The tentative determination of necessity just means, here's why, and lays it out on the expense and where and how the special assessment would look. And so the first step in that process, before we then, at the next meeting, with a public hearing occurring, sets the special assessment and puts it in place, this one really kind of agrees upon the, I'll call it the conditions that set that in motion.
So do we need a motion for all three of those?
No, just, we would need a motion for the, the manager's report and the tentative determination of necessity.
Yep. So we'll be looking for a motion for number two, tentative determination necessity.
And not the manager's report?
Both.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, both.
One and two.
Yep, one and two.
Apologize.
So I will make a motion to accept the manager's report and tentative determination of necessity
for alley paving Block 5, original plat and addition number four. Support.
Okay, motion by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Bulger. Any questions or concerns?
Where is Block 5? Robert, between Robert and Wrath, or in between Robert and Wrath, hate, pure market. I was doing a dance there.
Any other questions or concerns? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And we need to set a public hearing for alley paving for June 26, 2023, and I will make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Johnson, do we have support?
Second.
And we have support by Counselor Wencesky, set the public hearing for alley paving on June 26, 2023. Any questions or concerns?
Just two quick items before we move on to the next item. It is likely, we're going to have to work with Reith Riley pretty closely on this, because they have some of their staff members that are presently on a labor strike, so we'll have to work fairly closely with them, make sure this project moves forward. And then the clerk has also gotten notice that there's likely going to be one, potentially two more petitions that are out there for similar type projects, so recognize this process for the future as well.
I've got just one question, too, for Mayor Barnett. Mitch, can you explain how these people get their alleys paved? How does this work? You're talking about a petition.
Oh, so they, they can come, sorry, I was trying to think of how the question was being worded. They come in, they receive a petition from a clerk's office that allows them to essentially go out and get signatures from those that are along the alley. They need signatures from at least 70% of the property owners that line that alley, and then they split that cost by lineal foot amongst themselves. So I believe, again, in this alley, you're looking at a low cost for a property owner, somewhere around the $500 mark, to those up on the higher end, which is about $2,500, and anywhere in between, depending upon how much frontage along the alley they own.
And they, they have up to five years to pay?
Correct, yep. It does have a per annum interest cost associated to it, if they push it out that far. The other thing is, if you remember correctly, back to way at the beginning of the year, we bid out a, a number from pavement contractors or asphalt contractors to have an alley paving contract, so that we know the number and we can provide that to folks.
Are the residents responsible for the maintenance in like 20 years, if it needs to be repaved?
If it needs to be repaved, yes. They would then be, again, come back before and do the same process. Or, as Clerk Luskin pointed out earlier, one person can say, I'll take it upon themselves and do it themselves.
Merry Christmas.
At a cost of $21,000.
I hope that person likes petunias.
Is that the total cost, the 70%, or is it matched by the city?
No, total cost.
Total cost.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And last item, a resolution designating a trustee for the Charles Schwab 457 Plan, whereas the city of Luddington maintains the City of Luddington Deferred Compensation Plan, the 457 Plan, for the benefit of eligible employees of the city, and whereas the city of Luddington participates in the John Hancock 457 Plan and the MERS 457, and is adding the Charles Schwab and Company 457 Plan. Whereas the plan administrator for the Charles Schwab and Company 457 Executive Wealth Management has requested the city of Luddington to designate a trustee by resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Luddington designates Deborah L. Luskin, city clerk, as the trustee of the Charles Schwab and Company 457 Governmental Retirement Plan. I make a motion to adopt the resolution designating Deb Luskin, city clerk, as the trustee for the 457 Plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Johnson, do we have support?
Second.
Okay. Support by Counselor May. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to Building and Licensing, Long Range Planning, and Industrial Development Committee. Counselor Trizano.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only thing I want to report tonight is that Building and License will be meeting tomorrow at 4 o'clock, and we'll be talking about short-term rentals and the ordinance. We're looking to review it quickly and possibly make some changes to it. I do have several action items. First action item is, I make a motion to set the public hearing for June 26, 2023, for the Oprah application for 215 South James Street.
Do you have a second on that? Support, a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion or questions? If not, we'll, for those, for all those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
The second item is first presentation of ordinance number 51723 Campgrounds. The Planning Commission has dealt with the issue of the grandfather campgrounds in the Bayou area several times. And most recently, a special land use request was brought to the commission by a Bayou campground owner for expansion onto a neighboring parcel. In light of that request, a special land use public hearing was held, and the state-licensed campground in question was established in the mid-1970s. There currently are 10 camping spots, and the owners recently purchased the adjoining land, and they requested to expand into the new parcel with four additional campsites. The request was postponed, and the owner withdrew their special land use request at the issue was further referred to the committee for action on possible changes to the zoning ordinance. So the zoning committee met, discussed this, and were proposing a change to the zoning And the specific change is under the Section 2 of Article 202 point, or Article 4015:2 Campgrounds. Campgrounds provided they are licensed by the state of Michigan and located in the area bounded by East Dallin, East Water, South Madison, and South Washington streets. So in other words, in the waterfront area, you can have a state-licensed campground, primarily the Bayou area, and we put the streets in there just so you would know what the boundaries are. So I make a motion, no, this is just the first presentation.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
John, if we, we've got a few, if you go on East Dallin Street included in there, the campground is kind of, if I'm not mistaken, kind of like where an alley would be.
It's south of that. We only put East Dallin in there, only just to give it the outer boundaries, that stretch of properties along there. As you know, we're in the process of doing the rezoning on that, but those are right now, I'm trying to remember, I can't even remember what they're, that's not waterfront area, that section on East Dallin.
Okay, it is, because that's basically residential right now.
Right.
Okay. And we're looking at changing that to include campground area?
No.
No.
What it says right above the section that I read, waterfront district principal permitted uses shall be amended to add new subsection 7. So this is only in the waterfront district, and the waterfront district is south of that alleyway that you talked about. But as a way of just trying to describe the general area, that's why we put East Dallin up there.
Okay, so it doesn't include that residential section?
That's correct.
Thanks for that.
Yep.
Okay, item C.
The next item is the first presentation of sign ordinance, and I'll just give you a brief background. As you all know, we're in the process of redoing the whole zoning ordinance, but there was some movement before we took on the Unified Development Ordinance process to address the sign ordinance within our zoning ordinance. So what we did was, we took that whole chapter, turned it over to the text committee of the zoning, of the Planning Commission, because the text committee was already working on the sign ordinance, and the text committee has had a number of meetings over the past few months, including a big meeting which involved Planning Commission members, city council members came, and our consultants on this, McKenna. So what is before us is actually the whole sign ordinance chapter in the UDO format, which, and one of the things that I think is interesting, that gives you an opportunity to take a look at what it is we're going to be providing under the UDO. And I would just like to highlight, for example, Section 8, page 8. You'll see some graphics in there on how you measure signs. Previous ordinance, that was all just straight language. And now you got a picture that shows all different types of signs, how the lettering may go and stuff like that, and what's the proper way to, to measure. So we're very pleased with the work that the text committee did on this, and the work that McKenna did, and it's just a preview of things to come.
Counselor Trizano, and this will be the first presentation for that ordinance as well, 15, or 518-23. And just looking through the packet, as you've described, it's got illustrations and, and shows examples of what that would like. Do you anticipate the same type of use of graphics for the other parts of the UDO? Is this unique, or?
No, that, that's one of the principal things why we went with McKenna, because of their ability and the type of graphics that they do, so it'll be pretty extensive throughout.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll move on, but Madam Clerk, I need to go back and ask something and see if I, if I omitted something. Relative to setting the public hearing for June 26, did I ask for a second, did I receive a second on that vote? I'm sorry.
I have, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Wencesky to set the public hearing.
Thank you very much, thank you. All right, we'll move on to Public Safety, Public Utilities. Counselor May.
Your Honor, I have nothing to report and no action items to consider.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to Cemetery Parks, Recreation, Waterfront. Counselor Stibbets.
All right, so for my report today, I would like to kind of help facilitate a discussion for paid parking at Stern's Beach. Now while we're talking about this, I want to be very clear that this is not an end-all-be-all. If we vote to push forward pay parking, that does not mean that we are having paid parking at the beach. What it means is that we are giving the city manager authorization to continue to work with city staff on collecting data, incorporating research, and coming up with solutions to potential problems that we have identified with parking at the beach. So if we could kind of have a little discussion about whether or not we would like to push forward with that research, or if we would not like to push forward with that research, and I'll just open the floor for discussion.
And, and if I could, Counselor Stibbets, the discussion will take place relative to the city council talking about it.
Absolutely.
Any public input on it can happen again in the second public comment period.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right, move it up for council discussion.
Absolutely, go for it.
Are you calling for a vote tonight?
We are not calling for a vote tonight, we are asking the city manager to hear our opinions so that he can formulate an idea of what he should do pushing forward. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to discuss?
Mitch, do you feel that there's more information to be investigated?
Do I?
Yeah.
I, in my own opinion, I don't know what else I would provide, but that's why having the discussion, and if, that's why I kind of sent out that email in advance as well. If there was something the council was looking for that would help inform your discussion, inform the conversation, that was why I was asking for it. If there is nothing, then I will await direction via a motion of some sort at the next meeting or the meeting after that, but that's up to you all as to kind of what your direction's going to be to me. At this point, I think I've provided quite a bit. I know most of you have had those conversations with your constituents or neighbors, yeah.
Could I ask, who's going to construct the, maybe several different methods, models of, of the, the way that we would conduct this at the beach? I'm sure there's got to be more than one, you know, from everybody pays to, or where the city doesn't pay, the county might pay a little, et cetera. Who's going to construct these models that we will then actually vote on?
If, if I may, I think that's why we're discussing this now. If that's something that we want to look forward into doing, then we need to bring that back to Parks and Rec with all those options and different things to consider to bring that information back to city council. I mean, we already have information on two of those, but we haven't made any formal decisions. So if you're wanting us to, to investigate that, then we need to kind of give that direction. But if you're adamantly like, I'm going to vote no on paid parking, then it makes no sense to bring it to an ordinance or bring it to continued deliberation or discussion. Did that, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I know one of the things that had been talked about was the why, you know, and, and city manager Foster did a really good job in terms of explaining, you know, financially where we're at and what the costs are, frankly, of the, of the, of maintaining Stern's Beach in particular. And one of the things that, one of the comments that came up or concerns citywide, backing up away from Stern's Beach, is there are other areas that, that are areas of up away from Stern's Beach is there are other areas that, that are areas of concern, or in my mind, one in particular, and that would be our local streets. And so one of the benefits to doing that, if council chooses to do that, is to be able to, after, after the things like playground equipment and that kind of thing, if this were to go through and if revenue were collected, to fix those things and then take, in ensuing years, to take some of that money then and, and to work on the streets because of the, because of the lack of local street funding. So again, I mean, if we're going to have this discussion here tonight, it's important to, to say that, in my view, it would be important if we're going to do this, it would be important for us to say, that money, that extra money, not extra money, but that money that's brought in from revenue would go toward Stern's Park, but then the, the general fund money would go specifically to repair the streets. If there's other things, if you have feelings, whether you're for it, against it, if you have feelings about it, about, you know, a plan if one were to be put forward to consider by the whole council, if it's important to give city residents, city taxpayers, two free stickers, for example, that's a number that's been kind of put out there, then it would be important to say that this is, this is something that we need to do. If it's important to consider the, the parking zones across from Stern's Park into the neighborhoods and, and modify that to where it'll dissuade people from parking there in the event that paid parking were implemented, then that would be something that would, that Counselor Stibbets would want to take back to Parks and, Parks and Rec. And a number, any, any number of things, you know, is there, is there a need for in-county, outside the city but in-county residents to, to experience either through their local units or government or individually, a reduced rate for a sticker, for example, in order for them to, 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 to park at the beach? It's also important to determine or to remember from that meeting what this really called for. It really, or at least one of the suggestions was, is it would be like from, I believe it was 10 to 6:00 in the evening, so that anybody coming in to, for example, coming in to, to look at the sunset would do so, would need a park sticker or anything like that. And, and it would be for, it could be, depending on your input, for, for Parks and Rec, it could be for a finite period of time during the year. So all of those things I think are open for discussion here so that they can be taken back in a plan, a more concrete plan could be brought forward to council and saying, this is what it looks like, right? And so, because you can't vote on it unless you know what it is, right? And so I think it's important that we do that.
Well, I think we're in a difficult spot. And the difficult spot is either get a sense of whether or not we move forward or whether or not it gets shut down. And the difficult spot is the danger of doing, quote, "a straw poll" in terms of this. My fellow council members know where I come on this issue. I made it clear at the last meeting. And I don't think we need to move forward. I think, at least in terms of the public comment that we got at the committee of the whole meeting, was pretty clear. We got 2,500 feet of paradise. We got miles and miles and miles of free beach to the north of us, five immediate miles before you get to the state park, and then going up the coast, and we got miles and miles of free beach to the south of us. And I think just, at least for my, for myself, charging folks to view their, our part of paradise, I, it just, I don't care where it's done, I don't care how often it's done, I don't care what community does it, I just think it goes against personally who we are as a community and a city. Do we have budget problems? Yes. And it's easy to say, sitting on the council here today, but I think it's also fair to say that a number of those problems were created years ago by not investing in our capital fund and things like that. And, you know, and yes, we are paying, you know, for some of those decisions, for example, with the water and sewage rates. But I don't think that this is the answer to this. I think that there are other ways that if we really thought about it, we could get creative. We're not going to solve all of our, there's not one issue that's going to solve our budget problems. But there are, you know, some other things that I think we could do to help alleviate some of that. One of those things is, in fact, I'm going to bring it up at the building and license tomorrow, is to aggressively go after a blight ordinance. People have talked about blight ordinances here for years, but we've never done anything. And, and that's going to now be part of the building and license, and that's a, that's one way to raise money here. So I appreciate what you're doing, counselor, but I don't know how we... What? Oh, I'm sorry. I see hands. I don't know how, I don't know how we move forward without, you know, people actually saying which way they want to go. And, and maybe, I'm sorry, but maybe part of it is, you know, I think maybe the way you framed it, do we want more information? Or what? I mean, I don't...
Maybe it shouldn't have been framed as we need more information, but, but more presented on, do you want us to continue to make informed potential decisions to bring back to council? I think there's a lot of, of information that we don't have. We've had community members talk about parking on the street. I think that's a problem. But we don't have a solution to that problem, so we need to go back and come up with a solution to that problem. There, there is an issue where we're not certain who's going to get these parking passes and how much they're going to cost. And if outside places like PM Township and Hamlin Township, how are they going to pay for them? And, and how much are they going to pay for them? And how many are they going to get? I think there's a lot of things that we have to go back and, and if this is going to push forward, that would be kind of a waste of time on, on the city's part if we have more counselors that are like, nope, this is just a really bad idea. And so I think that we kind of need to feel that out before we, before we start doing all of that work. And I also want to make a, a quick point. I don't think we have a budget issue. When I think about budget issues, I think that means that we have a problem with, with allocating funds, and I don't think that's the issue. I think the issue is that we continue to offer free amenities to, to people in the city that aren't from the city, that don't help us pay for them. And so the burden then falls on the taxpayers. And we pay a higher tax for those amenities. People in the downtown area do pay a higher tax for those amenities. And, and outside people, tourists, et cetera, are using them for free. And so I think that the problem is, is we continue to offer free things to people that aren't paying for them, if that makes sense. And, and so, you know, I just wanted to have a little discussion, and I just wanted to make that very well known, that I don't think we have a budget problem. I think we have a fund issue, that we keep providing stuff for people, but we don't have a means to pay for it.
I have just something I'd like to, to read and say, too. I was on city council last time we brought up pay for parking. I was for it then, and I'm for it now. But bear with me a minute here, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there and a lot of misdirection. There's been a lot of opinions, discussions, and ideas floating around about the idea of pay for parking at Stern's Park. And I want to thank everyone for sharing those opinions and ideas with us, because this is what local government should be, a sharing of hearts, minds, and ideas to make our town the best it can be. So let's be sure that we all have the basic concepts clear. First of all, the taxpayers of the city of Luddington currently foot the entire burden of maintaining all the city parks to the tune of about $700,000 a year. If we take that $700,000 a year and divide it by our city population of about 8,000 people, we find that each person is contributing about $87.50 a year to the maintenance of our parks. This is a heavy financial responsibility that the taxpayers in the city of Luddington alone have shouldered for many years. And this price tag is maintaining these parks, and it goes up every year like everything else. Let's take a look at another situation where a local recreational resource is used by locals and guests alike, any of the local golf courses. One can pay for a membership at a golf course and play an unlimited number of times, and everyone's membership fees help to pay for the maintenance of the golf course, the lawnmowers, the fertilizers, clubhouse, et cetera. When a guest wants to play golf, he or she will pay a fee to use that golf course, which then that fee goes to the upkeep of the course. That way, the golf course is maintained by the membership fees and the guest fees for everyone, locals and guests, to enjoy this recreational activity. Would it be fair for a golf course to let anyone play free and expect the membership only to pay all the maintenance fees? This is exactly what's happening at Stern's Park. Out-of-town guests are using it free, and the local taxpayers are footing the entire upkeep cost. What if we spread that cost out by charging a fee to the out-of-towners to help us defer the costs of the park? The city has balanced its budget every year, and we must do that. In order to balance the budget, the city has made some cost-saving measures, which I heard at the meeting that people felt we have not, and we definitely have. The problem is, the residents haven't felt it yet. But here are just a few of the things that we've done. We used to clean the beach five days a week with a big machine that has brushes on it. It took a man, I don't know, six hours or so to do that. We now do it once a week. We've cut it down to just once a week. We've improved the efficiency of saltage in the winter. We use some other, we use sand along with the salt, so we have decreased the price of that. We've purchased refurbished snowplows instead of new snowplows, which has saved us a lot of money. We've replaced the downtown lighting with LED lights, which has helped a lot. We now have a half-time city assessor instead of a full-time. So we have worked to be within our budget, and I know you guys haven't seen some of those things, but in the future, if we're not proactive, we will see cuts to our services, local services. The pay for parking is an idea as a plan to proactively protect financial security in a way that does not raise taxes or cut our local services. Now, one last thing, let's review some of the ideas, none of this is in stone, that have been proposed. Memorial Day to about October 15th would be the times that they would be charged for parking. 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, everyone could eat breakfast down there free, could watch a sunset free any time of the year. The city of Luddington's residents would be free. And some of the ideas I've gotten from some of the people I've talked to, all city residents of Luddington, don't give out just two tags. If you live in Longfellow Towers, you would be able to receive a, a free pass. So anyone who lives in the city of Luddington. Now, we've got a lot of things to figure out how we would do all this stuff. The costs proposed, half a day, $5; ho-day, $10. Mason County residents, possibly $30 a year. Out-of-county residents, between $40 and $60. We charge 60 for a boat launching ramp price. And so, looking at that, you can drive through the park without paying, so you could drive through without paying. There's still lots and lots of issues if we decide to go forward that we would have to work out. But the big question right now is, should the tourists help us pay for the maintenance of Stern's Park and our public parks? Thanks.
Any other comments?
So I don't know that I agree that it's appropriate to isolate this one issue without regard to our full budget picture. I understand we want to raise revenue, but in light of what seemed to be significant public opposition to the whole notion, I don't know that I will be comfortable saying to the taxpayer, well, trust us, the budget, you know, we got some budget issues coming down the road. I think this ought to be part of a bigger budget discussion so that we can actually show that, yes, in a year, two, three, we may have to cut your services so that the people of the city can see that this program that they're pretty strongly opposed to really does make sense. But, you know, at this point, I don't see that we have that to be able to present to people.
Counselor Bulger, if I could, just to your point, so it's June now, budget will start in...
August, September.
August, September. So there needs to be some, some foundational things done as the budget process starts in order to know what the landscape is. And it would, it would be ill-advised, in my opinion anyway, it would be ill-advised to wait until the budget process starts to decide whether or not that's a source of additional revenue or not. So I, I think, I think while it may seem early and we're a year out from maybe being, being able to do that, we're also trying to determine relative to the rest of the budget, if this is a possibility. If it's not, then we know that. If it is, then we know that. So I think that's important to understand, to know.
There's just one other comment. We're putting city staff in a conundrum. I believe at the committee of the whole meeting, it might have been met with expressed concern about, you know, we don't want another marijuana situation where we invest months and considerable dollars in a, developing a plan and an ordinance if it's not going to fly. But as I understood the presentation, that's exactly where we're headed. Now, I will say that having worked on that committee with other counselors and Planning Commissioner Baufus, I don't regret a minute of the time we spent. I think it was a good investment of time. I think we did a good job and illuminated the issue pretty well, didn't happen to carry. So maybe that's the bullet we have to bite on this issue if we're going to say that while after six months or a year, that's when we're going to make the final decision.
Well... Yes, I, I'd like to say, speaking for the people of the first ward, the ward that obviously borders the park and would suffer the, the most possible negative ramifications of people parking on the street as a result or whatnot, they overwhelmingly do not wish to have this happen. And it's not just blanket, first impulse, no, I don't want it. It's after a lot of discussion, they're aware of the, the possibilities, the, the complicated kind of plan we could have where people are excluded in the town and the county and the daylight hours and whatnot. They just feel it's, it's, we'd, we'd also lose something, that this, this town is different than the towns up and down the shore. And to have a, a park, you can just come in and out and not worry about it, is an attractive part of that. And that the ramifications of that, the benefits of that, aren't measurable really in a, in a finite little dollar amount. And that for $200,000, which is pretty much the, the price that we set, or the, the amount that we set as a, as a possible income, it's not worth it. That they think it's better to say Luddington's different, you can come to the beach of Luddington and not worry about it, and all the trouble that we'd go to, the maintenance, the administration, everything else, just isn't worth it. So I know, I can vote right now to, to not proceed farther, that, that's not going to change for me or for those people. They've already discussed it quite a bit at length, and there are some that do want it, but the overwhelming majority says no.
If I can ask a question of clarification, it's really probably for City Manager Foster. Property taxes aren't based on the amenities that the city offers. Property taxes are based on the assessed value of the property, right?
It's actually a little bit of both. It, it'd probably be a little bit of both. If you're in a community that has zero amenities and is in horrid condition, has no beach, your properties are going to be worth different than Luddington, which has a beachfront and a number of amenities. So it's a little bit.
But they feed each other, right? I mean, you know, our property taxes aren't necessarily based on, we want to do a road improvement. Our property taxes aren't going to go up if we're going to do a road improvement unless the assessed value goes up. Is that...
Correct, but that is also the basis for a special assessment for a road project. Anytime you do a road reconstruction, the theoretical increase in value is the allowance for a special assessment. So technically, yes, there would be a chance for those property values to increase based on... on that. I'll take Water Street, for example, as Counselor Stibbs drives by on a regular basis. Previously, I would guess those property values were pretty significantly lower than what they might be here soon, just based on having a real road to drive on. But you're right, there is a little bit of disconnect between the two.
Okay.
And I also have a point of clarification, too. So, when you come to City Hall and pay your taxes, there, on your bill, there's a lot of different places that that tax-mounted money goes to. Sewer and water, the schools, all of those things. Now, the city isn't necessarily profiting from those taxes. That money is going directly to the water plant to continue, and water and sewer, to continue your water and sewer services, or to the school. We don't, the city doesn't actually see a large percentage of that, correct?
I don't have the percentage in front of me. Clerk Luskin might have it off the top of her head, how much we keep out of those tax bills. I don't have it off the top of my head. If I remember correctly, it was somewhere around the 30, 36% number of a tax bill goes to the city governmental operations.
Okay.
Any other comments or conversation you'd like to send back to Parks? Yes?
Well, I'm ready to vote now. I don't need any more information. I don't need the details worked out before I vote on off-street parking, on how much, on times, or anything like that. I'm ready and willing to vote right now. So, can we, can we vote at the next council meeting, whether we can pursue, or whether we pursue paid parking at Sterns Park or not?
So, just to be clear, in my mind, and maybe I'm the only one in the room that's thinking this way, if, if the answer is as simple as yes or no, regardless of the impact, then I think we, you know, then maybe some people are ready to vote now. And I don't vote in this, so I'm just simply stating the thoughts that occur to me. But again, we need to know what "it" looks like, at least in my view. Because how can you make an informed vote? I can think in the last six, seven months, there was an issue that was a contentious issue. And, and we knew what "it" looked like because the work was done, to Counselor Bulger's point. The work was done so that we know what "it" was, as opposed to some nebulous "it," right? So, I think it's important that as we look at these things, we at least have a good idea as to what we're voting on, rather than simply voting on a fear of what might happen or a feeling about, you know, something that's hard to quantify relative to the park and the way things have been and that kind of thing. So, I think it's important, frankly, and, and we're not in a position tonight where we're going to be making a decision. We've already discussed that. And then, I think it'll be up to Parks to decide whether or not to present a more formal thing based on your input, based on the input that they've received, and then bring that forward, and they can make a decision as to whether to do that. And then the council can decide whether or not they want to vote yes or no.
Well, to counter that, it's, it's not fear. I'm sure we can resolve the off-street parking and how we're going to handle that. We can resolve what kind of equipment we're gonna, we're gonna get at Sterns Park, and as I said, the hours and the dates that that's going to happen, and whether Luma Street Parking, that parking structure's going to be involved or not. I don't think I need those particular details as to whether I want to see paid parking at Sterns Park. So, it's just that, that particular issue, I'm sure all the other secondary issues can be resolved, can be worked through, and then we would vote again. But I don't need that type of detail in order to vote.
Okay. Thank you.
If I'm, hey, just so I understand what you're suggesting, and I believe what Counselor Stibbs is suggesting. Parks will come back at the next meeting and either make a recommendation to do further research, and that, and that's really what the vote will be. And if it's voted up, then that directs the staff to do further research. If it's voted down, then no more movement on it. Is that basically what you're saying?
I think, I think that's an option. I think the committee could get together and decide, "It looks like, it looks like this," and we think that the "it" is a good thing for council to consider. And they could bring, as early as the next meeting, they could bring it back for an up or down vote.
I'm not talking about the "it." I'm just talking about whether or not to give the city direction on further refining what "it" is.
Okay.
And what Counselor Kane is saying, he doesn't need those details on what "it" may be because he knows which way he's going to go.
Okay.
Is that...
Yeah, I think to come up with what the "it" is will take a very long time.
Take more time.
I don't think that we could have that worked out by the next city meeting.
But you're looking for a direction in terms of what to do after that? Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think the city is, I think the staff is looking for a direction. Do they pursue an RFP for kiosks and whatnot at Sterns Park? And then, once we get that back, we can further define how that's all going to work, et cetera. So, I think city staff needs to know whether we want to pursue this or not.
Counselor Johnson, I know you were about to say something. Did you, did you have it? No, you weren't. Okay. Okay. I thought, I thought you were...
Well, I guess, I just, I would like to say that I feel like I have to vote the way my ward would like me to vote. And without having all the information on, on the different ideas on how we're going to do this, I can't make an intelligent vote other than what my ward tells me that they would want me to do.
I agree.
I'm just curious, is there any harm in just voting tonight on whether to proceed with developing a method? I don't see how that could harm anything. If we've already got enough votes to say yes or no, I think we need to know that. Why proceed if already we don't want to do it?
Well, I guess I would like to talk to a few more people, myself. I don't know if anybody else would, but I would like to talk to the more people in my ward.
I would object to having that vote without it being on the agenda. I think that we would prevent people, the public, coming in knowing that we're going to vote yea or nay, and we will not give them the opportunity to, to do public comment, to share their views once again. So, just the fact that it's not on the agenda, I would, I would be very against that.
That's a good point, Willie.
So, I would make a motion to refer the matter to the next meeting of the Parks Committee to make a recommendation as to whether we should proceed to develop a plan for charging at Sterns Park for parking.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Bulger. Do we have support for the referral back to Parks?
Support.
So, if, if I would further comment that I think Counselor Kane's position was pretty well-taken. We said we were going to have a discussion. This would give the public an opportunity for more input and give a committee a chance to take a little deeper look at it. I guess the other, the other thing is, if the vote is in favor, I could envision that there's at least one, maybe two or three ordinances to implement, all of which we will have the opportunity to vote on if we do study the matter. So, it's not like at the next meeting, if we vote to go forward, that doesn't answer the question of whether we're going to have paid parking. We're simply going to study it in more detail.
I'm not sure who this question is geared to, but it might be Jackie back there. I do believe our next meeting for Parks and Rec is June 27, and I think that the next city council meeting is June 26. Is that correct? Debbie's shaking her head, yes. Okay. So, we maybe need to schedule a special meeting to, or move the meeting up a week or something like that so that we can have that discussion? Is that true?
If you want to put it on that agenda.
Okay.
If, if I may. Do we really need a meeting of Parks and Recreation to have the vote at the next council meeting? I would envision that the Parks and Rec Committee would vote to bring this to a vote at the next council meeting, without any, any other input, like, do we proceed or not? So, do we need to go to the Parks and Rec before we come to the next city council meeting in two weeks?
It's my understanding that the motion is specifically to do that.
But, Your Honor, I included that in the motion because I had a sense that that was the way the committee and the council was leading. I would not object to striking that and just, I have a scheduled next meeting for discussion and vote.
Well, Cherry, and, and, do we need to go to Parks and Recreation? Kathy and Cherry?
If I could. Counselor Bulger, if, is, what you're saying is you're withdrawing your motion to refer back to Parks? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, I'll withdraw my motion, and then we can proceed from there.
All right. And I assume that the support is being withdrawn as well?
Well, if I don't, does that just convolute things even more?
Well, my question is, is there any other similar motion that anyone has drawn?
Yeah, I withdraw.
Yes.
Then I would ask, Counselors, any other similar motion that somebody would want to bring?
So, I'd move to put this on the table until the next council meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Who did the second on that one? Thank you, Willie. All right. So, we've drawn the motion to return the issue to the Parks Committee, and the motion by Counselor Bulger, seconded by Counselor Kane, was to move the decision on the issue of paid parking at Sterns Beach to the next council meeting, whatever date that is.
June 26.
June 26. Any questions or comments? I'm sorry. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Next, we do have an action item, and we're looking at adopting a resolution of authorization for a Sparks grant for the Cartier Park bathhouse updates. And I'm going to kind of refer to City Manager Foster to talk a little bit about the situation that we have recently been informed of and how we plan to potentially fix that.
So, as a part of the Cartier Park Bathhouse Project, the original, the original estimate we received was $700,000 for the renovation of two restroom facilities about a year and a half ago during the application process. When we received notice of the grant award, we had our budget updated, and it was at $1.1 million. Bids came back last week or a week and a half ago, the bids, the low bid was at $1.4 million. Things just continuously increase. The engineer and the contractor, the low-bid contractor, are working to reduce that $1.4 million as best they can to keep the project within reason. However, we are likely still going to have a gap of some sort. And at the last Parks meeting, it was suggested by staff to, to apply for a Sparks grant, which does not require matches, but we would have a significantly large match of $79,000, or 79%, I should say, to try to bridge that gap between the $1.1 million that we have budgeted and the $1.4 that is estimated, or I should say, bid. However, we do have a second project that we've already put, or already finalized in the semitone, which is the Capian Park Launching Ramp and Bathroom Project. And so, in addition to, if, if this resolution is approved to forward the Cartier Park Bathhouse Update Project for a Sparks grant, council also has to determine which one takes priority. We have to pick a number one and a number two.
I think this is kind of a really sticky situation because we, we all agree that both of those projects are really important. I know the manager, Russ Ober, is here today, and he has been working really, really hard for years and years and years on this bathhouse project. If this project doesn't go through, he can't continue to run the campground. And, and he can't continue to run the campground because there isn't a bathhouse that's efficient for the residents of the campground to use. And we won't be able to host people in the campground if this project doesn't go through. So, picking a priority is really hard because we need, we need the bathhouse, we need the Cartier Park, or the Capian Park situation as well, and we've already put that through to the Sparks Grant Committee. So, I'm going to read the resolution, and then we're going to vote on the resolution to apply for the Sparks grant for the Cartier Park Bathhouse Updates. And then, I will make a motion to put forward the priority, if that's okay with everyone.
If, I have a question on the resolution.
Absolutely.
Is there a limit on Spark grants?
In what sense?
Dollar amount?
A million.
Then why are we underbidding this? The contract was for $1.468.
Yep.
And you talked about the engineering and project costs, so why isn't that included? Why isn't the full bid included as well as the project?
So, the, the 68,000 that was removed were kind of non-needs after we went through that originally.
Oh, so that was, okay.
Yep. That was reduced. The $1.4, the $1.468 included alternates, and we've also found as Russ and the engineer went through, there were some electrical upgrades that were included as part of that that aren't necessary and are kind of overkill. And so, that's why the $1.4 is truly, after haring back from the, the engineer, that includes a lot of their expenses as well. We should be fully covered with $1.4.
And then what about the engineering and project management?
Should be all included in that $1.4 at this point with those reductions.
Everything.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Because part of this is, we need to, we need to, we need to be at $1.4 to cover all of that because we're going to have enough reductions to get us down to a good point. The other situation with Spark in general is, they don't have a ton of money. And so, if we can show that we have a 79% match, and we only need X, and it's significantly smaller, that gives us a better shot. Because I believe this round only has $25 million available, the next round has $35 million available, but you have 700 applications, and there are 800 applications. And so, any way that we can make our standout, finding this bridge gap and knowing that we've already applied, we've already got the trust fund, so this is going to help us fill that gap because of supply chain, all of the numbers, hopefully makes it a very positive application.
Could I ask, when we ask for so much money from them, should they say no because to them the amount's too high? Do they come back with a possible lower offer? Or is it a one-time, it's up to you?
Spark is a brand-new program. I do not know how their first round went. I'm not sure if we've heard from them as to what that looks like. There haven't been any awards in West Michigan, kind of Oceana County north, all the way up to Benzy County and over to, I think, Osceola County. There hasn't been anybody in this area. I've not heard whether there were kind of given takes on those numbers.
But as at this point, you think we're playing poker? We either win or lose, pretty much?
A little bit, yeah.
All right.
The other, the other thing is, we've, as a part of this project, and this will come up at the next meeting, we'll come with the approval of the, the low bid. We're also going to go back to the Michigan Department of International Resources Trust Fund Board and ask for an increase there. That, there is, there is zero chance there, but we've at least got to ask the question. But we have a gap, and we need to figure out how to fill it. So, we are reaching out to all of our potential sources, community foundation, nonprofits though, is to try to find ways to do this.
And it is possible that we are awarded both of the grants, which is why we need to put priority. Just a point of, point of reference. Okay, so here is the resolution of authorization, whereas the City of Luddington supports the submission of an application titled Cartier Park Bathhouse Updates to the Spark Grant Program for Rebuilding Renovation of Two ADA Accessible Bathhouse Facilities, and whereas the City of Luddington is hereby making a financial commitment to the project in the amount of $1.1 million matching funds in cash and/or force amount, force account. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Luddington hereby authorize submission of a Spark application for $300,000, and further resolves to make available its financial op-... obligation amount of $1,100,000, which is 79% of a total $1,400,000 project cost during the City of Luddington's 2023-2024 fiscal years and the State of Michigan's 2023-2024 fiscal years. So I make a motion to adopt the resolution of authorization for a Sparks grant for Cartier Park Bathhouse Updates.
Support.
A motion by Counselor Stibbe, seconded by, or support by Counselor Trezano, to adopt the authorization, or adopt the resolution for authorization for the Spark grant relative to Cartier Park Bathhouse Updates. Any questions or comments or concerns? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
And the next motion that I'd like to make is because we cannot run Cartier Park without these bathroom upgrades, to place first priority with the Sparks grant to Cartier Park Bathhouse Updates.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Stibbe, seconded by Counselor Trezano, to prioritize Cartier Park first, you said? Thank you, thank you. Any discussion?
I just have a question on the Copian Park Spark grant. What was the amount we asked for for that, Mitch? Do you remember?
794,000 is a number that comes to mind, Ralph Hand.
Okay. So we probably have a better chance of getting the Cartier Park because we have such a big buy-in.
Because it's such a new program, their awards were all over the map, not physically on Michigan, but all over, kind of the number, the match, because there is no match requirement with Spark. And they, they did not indicate on any of their webinars or FAQs whether a match was highly thought upon or not. I think the hope is that because it's a lesser amount, if we can fill in where they've got, where they spent up to 23 and 1/4 million dollars and they just need to fill in a couple of smaller projects, $300,000 might allow us to fill in a little bit easier. 794,000, you're looking at another million-dollar project. So, yeah.
After the first round of awards for the Spark grant, or the second round, does our next priority automatically go to the next round, or do you have to reapply?
Oh, these, these would stay in. So this would be for the second round, which is due at the end of June. We submit both projects. Cartier Park, all of a sudden, great, we get 300,000, that comes off the list, and then the other one jumps up to the top and remains in for the final round and/or if they decide to fund it again with additional funding.
Any other comments? Discussion? If not, all those in favor, prior, the motion prioritizing Cartier Park as first priority for the City of Luddington, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Counsel, any issues to bring up?
I just, I just have one, Your Honor. Last week on Tuesday, I'm on the Michigan Works Board, and they had a hiring fair down at Rotary Park last Tuesday. It was a beautiful day. They had 43 vendors down there and 50 to 60 people walking through looking for jobs. So I thought that was, I thought that was very good. I don't know for sure how many people were hired. That information will come later, but I just, I think it was great that that many people showed up and we had that many vendors. Thank you.
I have a comment, Your Honor. Last month, Chief Jones hosted a get-together up at Forest Hills to talk about stop signs, and I commend the chief for putting that together and addressing the residents that came, and several of his councilor members were there. But I do want to raise an issue about the law that you cited, the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And it says in here, "In addition, the use of yield or stop signs should be considered at the intersections of two minor streets or local roads where the intersection has more than three approaches and where one or more of the following conditions exist." And then the conditions are, you either have to have, I'll just paraphrase, 2,000 units, be it people walking by, cars, bikes, whatever. The other one is, "The ability to see conflicting traffic or an approach is not sufficient to allow a road user to stop or yield in compliance with the normal right-of-way rules." And the other one is crash records. And you cited that as saying that the law itself doesn't warrant the stop sign. And thinking about it, I first look at the operative word, and the operative word in there is "should," and to me, that's a suggestive word, it's not a mandatory word. And if we applied this criteria to all the yield signs and stop signs in the city, we wouldn't have any. Because if you take a look at most of our north-south streets where there are stop signs, we don't have 2,000 people passing by them. They're very clearly marked, so you don't have obstructions, and we certainly don't have the amount of accidents. And the same thing with the yield signs that go east and west. My whole point is, I think that there's some leeway, you know, for the Public Safety Committee when you're taking a look at this, especially when the operative word, in my view, is "should" and it's not "shall," because to me, "should" means suggestive, so that's just my comment on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? City Manager?
Just a couple of things. Behind my report today, you've got the updates from the Assessor on the Taxable and Assess Values within the community, as well as a piece of TIF legislation at the state legislature that would open up housing projects as an eligible expense for brownfield projects or TIF districts, which would be fairly significant for a number of locations across the state, but Mason County in particular. Working with SPlica, the Sabal Point Lighthouse Keepers Association, on an interesting project that they've got coming up, you will hopefully have a presentation at the next meeting likely to look at something out there. Met with the Boat Club about some potential infrastructure changes out that way. And then I will be out of the office from the 17th until the 20th of June for a personnel challenge over in Wisconsin, but if there are questions, comments, or concerns, I'm happy to answer them. I do have two items for action on my report.
I do have one question for you. Lower Street Project, when are they supposed to break ground?
Well, we're still finalizing the development agreement. That's still in the works right now because there was some kickback on the, the 15% for holdback. So within the development agreement, there was a 15% holdback for contingency in those items. They kicked back on it, whether that was an annual or just a one-time item. It's our argument that it should be annually, so that if something is missed, it's covered. And then even at the end of the year, if everything's covered, then the rest of it just applies and goes back to them like a normal payment. So that's the one thing that we're working on.
Okay.
They're still hoping, my understanding is they're trying to finalize their financing for an August dig date.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to ask you a question, Mitch, that again, I didn't give you a heads-up on, but I saw that Dr. Reamer had a broadcast or made some advisement on what he's doing with his property here.
Yep.
Could you respond to that?
Yeah, so Dr. Reamer has announced Andy's is going to be the new building going up where the old Michaels was. They have a tentative start date of sometime in the middle of July. It was our request, due to the hole there, that they put up some of those banners around the outside. They've got six up right now that don't cover a whole lot, but it's a starting point. We are going to be putting in a request that they cover in a majority of those fencing, at least along the two street-facing areas here this week. But they have, all of the foundation plans and drawings are done. Those should be received by Sean shortly. And then once that's in, then they'll be out for bid with that, and again, that's where you get to that July start date. But they're talking a, I think, 12- to 16-month construction period, or 14- to 16-month construction period.
Thanks.
They're going to, one of the big things that we're working on, no, one of the big things that we're working on is Rath Avenue. That is going to be a topic of conversation because I think there will be a disagreement as to what is closed and for how long.
Wasn't there a two-hour parking limit there now?
Can somebody take his stick away from him?
I believe on the west side of the road, yes.
Okay.
Right.
That's all I have for a report unless there are more questions. My two action items that I have for request this evening, we do have a request from the Friends of Luddington State Park for the, for their raffle at the Blessing of the Boats activity, just like we had with the Pirate Heads, I believe, a couple of meetings ago. Similar situation, this has to have local government unit approval, or local unit of government approval. So I would ask for a motion to approve this raffle.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by Counselor Trezano, seconded or support by Counselor Kane for resolution for charitable gaming license for Friends of the Luddington State Park at Blessing of the Boats. Any questions or any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you. The second item is kind of an amendment to a previously approved item. Previously, council had approved the Rhythm and Dunes concerts for West Shore Bank. However, one item that was missed in that approval was fireworks to be occurring on July 29th, or if weather doesn't permit, it would be on the August 5th date. It comes back to you because there is the inclusion of fireworks. This was frankly caught at the Public Safety Committee because we were talking with Chief Henderson at that meeting about the other fireworks. So we got back with West Shore Bank and they resubmitted this request with the fireworks included, and so I would ask for consideration of this as well to add fireworks to the Rhythm and Dunes concerts.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Counselor May, seconded by Counselor Bulger, to add the permission to add fireworks to the Rhythm and Dune concerts. Is it both? Let me just ask, well, is it one concert?
One concert with the alternative concert as the rain date.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on this motion?
Has the fire chief signed off on this?
Chief Henderson?
Excuse me, yes. So we, unfortunately, it got missed at the committee level, but I've worked with West Shore Bank, so I'm hoping, I didn't necessarily see the document, but there will be the setback, safety setbacks are in play, that will move the peninsula part of that, we'll have to designate as, obviously, no one around there and clear out about 125 feet from where we're going to ignite those fireworks there. So they will be well to the north and into the ban shell, so the peninsula part, if you will, will have to be abandoned during the shoot for that evening. As far as safety concern and that, no safety concern, I mean, the grass is watered there and things are nice and green there, so we won't have to worry about that so much. And as far as the debris and paper and stuff, which has always been a question, they've assured me they have plenty of volunteers and ways to pick all that up. So from our perspective, we're all set to go and do that for them. Again, if it doesn't happen on the 29th, it'll happen the week later, and if not, we'll see what we're going to do with $3,500 for the fireworks, so. They, they've done a great job, they've got the insurances in play, and they've worked very well with us to make that happen. So yes, I've signed off.
Thank you.
Chief, will crosswinds or those condos along the harbor, will those be affected at all?
They're going to give you a great show.
Okay.
At no cost. There will be a little impact, if you will, potentially for folks that, at the concerts, there's times where people will bring their boats along or run, and so that peninsula that they, they come up along that dock, they will, we'll have to make sure we don't have that inner dock of harbor view. We'll have to make sure we clear that off a little bit. They can get down further toward the condos, but to get the right distance or clearances, safety clearances, we'll need to have that designated as a no boating, no parking of your boat, whatever you want to call it, kind of space there. So it should be very much like we saw the other night, except down, whatever, we were probably 40 feet shorter to the ground there, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Anything else?
Thank you.
All right.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, thank you.
So I have you this evening, Your Honor.
All righty. I'd like to take a moment just to thank a couple, a man and wife, residents of the City of Luddington, for their service to our, to our community. Angela Rickett, who currently serves as, as on the Board of Directors at Luddington Mass Transportation Authority, and her husband Cory Rickett, who currently serves and has served on the Planning Commission. Both of them, both of them have, also have a rich experience with the Luddington Area J.C.s, and both of them are, they'll be moving south out of the City of Luddington to a community south of us relative to a job change. And so I'd just like to, if I could, express my appreciation to them, and I don't know if council had any issues that they would, or any, any comments that they would like to make relative to their service, but just, I think it's important that we thank them for their service to the City of Luddington.
I would, when I joined the Planning Commission back in 2018, Cory was on it and he subsequently became chairperson of the Planning Commission. And I was extremely grateful for having him there. He helped me tremendously. Like you said, he has been a tremendous asset to the city. I know him much better than his wife, and I just, it's a big loss for the city because the time and effort that both of them have given to the city has been extraordinary. We'll miss them, but they got a great new, exciting chapter in their, in their life, and we wish them all the best.
Thank you. I floated the idea that council had to approve their departure, but they didn't think that that was accurate, so anyway, we'll just wish them well and thank you and look forward, wish them well on their future endeavors. One other item that I'd like to mention tonight is just the great time and the wonderful opportunity downtown last, last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and there was just, I can't think of a part of it that I don't think that was, that could have been improved in any way. It just, it just seemed to just flow perfectly, and, and there is so many folks that, that had a part in making that happen, so just really, really appreciate everyone that worked hard and got that event, and I know people were definitely looking forward to it. I know they enjoyed getting together, and the fireworks did create a really nice endpoint and just an awesome display, so thank you to the firefighters in particular. At this point, we'll move on to public comment, second opportunity. Would hear the same guidelines mentioned at the beginning of tonight's meeting, with the exception that each speaker will have two minutes. I request that anyone wishing to address the council please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, or ward, and organizational affiliation if that's appropriate. Once you're done, you'll be recognized for two minutes and speak directly into the microphone and address all comments to the chair. Welcome, Your Honor.
Good evening. Charles Sabansky, 201 and F. 4th Street, Luddington, Michigan, 4th Ward. On the issue of parking down to Sterns Park, I am totally against it. We had a public meeting last week where 90% of the people said they didn't want it. Didn't you get any of that? We're spending as much time on this parking as you did with the chicken ordinance. Let's drop it. Let's get our things together. Let's, we don't need to go on and on and on and on. We don't need parking down. We don't need to charge. Pretty soon, we're going to charge to park out here to come to the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Patrick O'Hara, 158 Harbor Drive. I applaud the city council for at least discussing the parking issue regardless of how you proceed, but I would like to point out that the city council in December of 2021, when it updated the master plan, included an objective under the goal under Parks and Recreation to explore the possibility of a Friends Group for the city parks. And I've been approached in the last week or two by a number of city residents regarding that because of my involvement with the Friends of Luddington State Park. And while I do not believe that the city actually has to be the one to establish such a Friends Group, nor do I think Park and Recreation has to be a committee to actually work on it, the city has to send a strong signal that it really wants a Friends Group before anyone- really wants a friends group before anyone, in my opinion, should spend time on doing so. The only way it works, and I network because of what I do with the Friends of Luddington State Park as a volunteer, I network with friends groups across the state that are involved in the DNR. And in doing so, I'm able to see which ones work and which ones have challenges. And the ones that work are the ones that are synergistic with a governmental agency. And when I say that, I mean the park that they are actually supporting. When they get in conflict, it just creates conflict. And so I think if the city sends a direct signal that it's interested in really supporting a friends group, there are enough interested parties that would come together and start trying to establish one. It's not going to fill the $600,000 budget. It probably would only fill a small portion of it. But it is another channel for communication with the citizens of Luddington, and it is something that people could donate and get involved in, even those that do not live in the city. And so I think the time is right. I actually think the discussion about parking at Sterns Park has actually positioned it to occur. And so I would ask the city council to endorse it moving forward and getting a group to come together and do the work. Thank you.
Thank you. This is scary.
May I have the talk? You want it from the newspaper?
Sure.
Can I fucking do it from the newspaper?
Don't be scared, Mitch. Kate Watkins, we now live on Vernado Drive in PM Township. So I have three things, but I'll be quick. First of all, I want to thank you guys for having public comment, because I'm going to reiterate what Sherri said a couple of times ago about the stop sign thing over at Sherman. I shared it on Facebook after we had that meeting, and I know many people attended that meeting. And I think it's great that so many of them came prior to that, to have that meeting happen, because I'm pretty sure, like, I look at the agenda just like you guys do, and I think we probably all would have just, if I was up there, I would have just voted it through, like, oh yeah, we don't need that stop sign. And it is a dangerous corner. I used to be friends with the Hallydays who lived right up there on the corner, and it is kind of a blind spot. So that's number one. Number two, thank you for paving the alley behind my brother's house. He's been trying for years to get that paved, so now his Crown Vic won't get stuck in the snow in the winter, so I don't have to hear about that. And number three, I agree with Mayor Barnett. I think Friday night's festivities were pretty awesome, and it makes me really realize how much the city misses those kind of things. So it's just my two cents. If we could start thinking about possibly bringing back some type of Friday Night Live, I think it would really benefit the city. There's so many people who come out, so many booths that can be set up for a minimal fee, and it brings in so much business to the downtown. People eating out, people shopping, that might not ever come downtown otherwise, because there's other things, and I hate to say it, because it's free, they do come down and participate in that. But that makes them go into other places downtown that they might not do all the time. We miss it at our family, so, and I know a ton of other people do, so I just wanted to kind of put those two cents into you guys. And thanks for all you guys doing, putting up with my articles.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Tom Sanders, nine twenty-seven Maple Street. At the meeting of the whole about this parking issue, city attorney, he said that the deed, there's nothing in the deed that prevents the city from charging to park. He did not say there's nothing in the deed that prevents the city from charging tourists to park. So obviously, that you all are not going to be here forever. So you open this door and start charging tourists to park, and how long before the deed reflects, well, we can charge everybody to park? And then the citizens will be, you know, affected by this. A few years back, there was, there was a family in Cartier Park, make four families, and the officer went through the park and he found a beer can. This is eleven o'clock at night, their kids were asleep. This was an article that was in the paper, edited to the editor there. And they had them wake up their kids, pack up their campsite, and leave. Years ago, there used to be a bike night in town here. And bikers travel on their wallet, but they're a fairly bunch. And it was a noise issue. And they bought, there was a stand test being done, tickets being written. My point is this, when you, the first time you tow a car, because of this parking thing, because of the blessing of the social media, it's going to go out all over the place. It did with these folks. Bikers don't come in on the car ferry like they used to. They don't come to Luddington like they used to, because it went out. Stay away from Luddington. It's not friendly. The folks here, the four families, they were actually looking, according to the letter that she wrote, of buying a home here as a vacation home, they just left. They, they, and it's all, it was all over social media. Already this year, there's been an issue on social media where someone has had a bad experience here in Luddington, and the same thing. They're not coming back. And it's on social media. So be real careful when you start towing cars, because it'll be out there everywhere.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Michael Olson, of two two five West Luddington Avenue. I was here last time, downstairs, listening to everybody. And I agree with Mr. John. There should be no point going forward with this. Like, there should be a voting tonight. I agree with anything what he said. Because sooner or later, everybody's going to park in my apartment. So like I said, my parking is free, the city owns it. So it's not fair to me. It's not fair. Everybody lives there, because I won't have no place to park to bring my groceries up and everything. So, but somebody at work made a good point to me. There was parking, lots of parking, a long time ago. What those benches are down there on the beach, that was all parking. So you guys put the pitting tables on there. You guys didn't put the pitting tables on there, that little bench park, that was all parking. If you guys didn't put that there, we wouldn't have an issue now. But so you guys put that there, there's not a lot of parking there now. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other public comment? All right. If there's no other public comment, we'll close that second period of public comment, and we'll move to miscellaneous business. And Attorney Hammersley, if, if I could, because it was just, the issue was just raised, my recollection of your comments in the meeting of the committee of the whole was relative to what the, an affirmative comment about what the deed expected or required of the city, not just around one issue. Can you maybe elaborate on that if, I know I'm hitting you on the spot?
Sure. No, yeah, the, the way that the deed restriction works is, I think, a little bit different than, than maybe what was sort of described. I think it is established, the restriction itself is established when the conveyance document is recorded. So if somebody, you know, if any family were to deed property to a portion of Sterns Park to the city, then in that deed, conveying that property to the city, they would have included, in several instances, did include a restriction that says that this land should be used for park purposes. Only a couple of them had a reverter that's, which is a, sorry, a legal term, which means that the property would then, if it was not used for park purposes, would revert to the prior owner. So actually, the city would lose the property in that instance. But in all those instances, the nature of that restriction is just that it continues to be used as a park. And again, in this instance, even if you were to be charging, it doesn't matter, residents or tourists, whomever, for the privilege to park at the park, you're not changing the underlying use of the property as a park. And so the deed restriction would not be implicated, because you're not, if you were to change it to an amusement park, then we start getting into, you know, different situations. Toward all that and put a hotel up, obviously, that's a different situation. And so then it would revert. But in this instance, what you're discussing is contemplating the idea of possibly, you know, essentially recouping some of the costs of maintaining that as a park, which actually is a requirement under those deed restrictions. So there's an argument to be made that you're fulfilling your duty to maintain those parks as parks by recouping costs from, from free riders, in a sense, to do so. So that answers your question.
Thank you very much. Any other miscellaneous business?
I just had one good thing to end tonight. Lots of places have opened for the summer. Fridays Farmer's Market, the Splash Pad, mini golf, the Sandbox Concessions stands at the beach, Dairy Queen, camping at Cartier Park, and the State Park. Go out and enjoy all that summer has to offer us.
Any other miscellaneous business? If there is none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify it by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same? Carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Did you have any questions on that?
No, I'm going to ask them.